Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair.
Welcome. I am Sharon Green Middleton, Representative for the Sixth District, as well as Council Vice President of the City Council and Chair of the Economic and Community Development Committee. We are here this afternoon for the following bills: 21-0054, 21-0056, 21-0076, and 21-0097. In attendance today, we have members of the committee. John Bullock.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
We also have a member of the committee, Councilman Mark Conway, but he has an excused absence, but it might be a possibility he'll join us later. So just wanted to make that. Do I see Councilman Ryan Dorsey? Not yet. Councilman Antonio Glover? Not yet. Councilwoman Odette Ramos?
Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Member of the committee, Councilman Robert Stokes, also a member of the committee.
I am here.
Thank you. And I also see present from the First District, Councilman Z. Cohen.
Nice to see you, Madam Chair.
And just checking for any other council members present at this time. Moving on to members of the President's office, I see Nikki Thompson and Lisa Font.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. And Matt Stegman.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Representing the Mayor's Office, I see Natasha Mihew.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Before we begin, I would like to remind you that if you are not speaking, please keep yourself on mute. Please do not take yourself off of mute unless you are recognized by the Chair. When recognized, please identify yourself in the agency or agencies that you represent. And once you have finished speaking, please put yourself back on mute. And let's begin. And we're starting with Bill Number 21-0054, rezoning 605 South Caton Avenue for the purpose of changing the zoning for the property known as 605 South Caton Avenue, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat from the C2 zoning district to the I2 zoning district and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on March 2, 2021. The bill's sponsor is Councilmember Porter. And I don't see Councilmember Porter on. And at this point, do committee members have any questions before we move on to hear from our agency representatives? Okay, we're going to start on this bill with the Planning Commission. And again, just please explain for the committee the findings and recommended amendments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Martin French with the Baltimore City Planning Department on behalf of the Planning Commission. At its regular meeting on April 22 of this year, the Planning Commission considered City Council Bill 21-0054, changed the property known as 605 South Caton Avenue from the C2 zoning district to the I2 zoning district. The Planning Commission reviewed a staff report, which I will go into further, and recommended that this bill be amended and approved, and adopted this resolution. The Planning Commission concurs with the recommendation of its departmental staff, adopts the findings outlined in the staff report with consideration for testimony and facts presented in the meeting, and recommends that City Council Bill 21-0054 be amended and passed by the City Council. Specifically with regard to the bill, this property is about a 0.85 acre property in the southwest portion of the city at the intersection of Caton Avenue and Strickland Street. It is basically an industrial, commercial property. The area in its vicinity is primarily zoned I1, which is light industrial, although there is some residential zone property not far away. Less than two blocks west of this property is the main Amtrak rail line running between Baltimore and Washington, D.C. The adoption of the current zoning code was accompanied by a change in study.
For some reason, it looks like we lost the sound for Mr. French. Hello, Mr. French? So it looks like...
Madam Chair, you're on mute.
Thank you. It looks like we lost the sound for Mr. French. So I see some... Oh, oh, is he trying to get back on? Okay, while he's trying to get connected again, let's go ahead and move to the Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals. Do we have a representative? Hello? So Kathleen Byrne is not here. Is Simone Penning here? So Natasha, do you have any information from the Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals? Okay, so it looks like they... Okay, so it looks like they deferred to planning. So again, we'll wait to see if Martin can reconnect and get back on. Let's move on to the Department of Transportation with Liam Davis.
Morning, Madam... Excuse me. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Great to be here. Liam Davis, representing Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection. Thank you.
Thank you. The City's Solicitor's Office.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Lena DePietra for the Law Department. The Law Department concurs with the State Department's assessment of the situation in that, in fact, a mistake was made in the original zoning. And as long as the Council finds, makes findings that are consistent with that, the Law Department can approve the bill from form and legal sufficiency.
Okay. And let's move on to the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We too stand by our report. We do not object to the passage of this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Baltimore Development Corporation.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and other distinguished members of the City Council. My name is Dave Garza for Baltimore Development, and BDC supports favorably the consideration of Bill 21-0054. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Department of Finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pedro Ponte of Baltimore City Department of Finance, Assistant Director. We stand by our report. We defer to the Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals and Plan Department on their opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Does the committee have any questions from these, for agencies, before we move to public testimony? Hearing none. We're going to go ahead and move on to public testimony. Jennifer, you have... Okay. While she's checking and getting that together, I just want to make sure that computer use, please use the raise hand function if you wish to testify. When called upon, please state your name. Attendees who call in by telephone will be unmuted one by one. Callers will hear two beeps when unmuted. If you do not wish to testify, please say so when you are unmuted. If you do wish to testify, please make sure you state your name. And let's check and see if we have any hands raised in the participant piece. And I do see one, Justin Williams. She's going to bring you up as a panelist. Justin, are you there?
Yes. Good afternoon. Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Justin Williams appearing on behalf of the applicant, Liberty Properties LLC. Just want to let you know, I'm here and here to answer any questions. In case Mr. French doesn't log back in, I can go through the findings of fact, which are my client would support the committee adopting.
Please go, please go through those. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. French had left off that, I think he mentioned that the Planning Commission voted to approve the requested rezoning in its April 22 meeting, along with an amendment to replace the use of I2 wherever it appears in the bill with I1. The intent of the petitioner in the initial draft, a dislation provided to Councilwoman Porter was to rezone the property to I1. And my client supports that amendment. The Planning Commission recommended approval with that amendment. The basic reason for the rezoning requested here is on the basis of mistake. The property, I think Mr. French had started going into detail about, is it a corridor? That is, as he mentioned, largely kind of industrial, commercial. And here, the mistake is that the rezoning from B3 to C2 here neglected to, I guess, provide for outdoor storage and equipment. And this property has been used for decades for contractor, storage yard, and outdoor lumberyard type uses. And the property's been vacant because once the lumberyard use had vacant the property, there was no ability to refill it with a use that would be allowed outside. So that is the main reason for the rezoning. And the Planning Commission agreed. We would, I guess, ask the committee to adopt the Planning Commission's findings of fact. I'd have to go through those in more detail if you'd like, or provide the written version to Ms. Coats for the...
Thank you. I see Martin French is back. Martin, are you, are you on?
I'm going to speak right now. And if you hear me, please nod or give me a thumbs up.
Oh, there you are. We see, we see you as well.
I'm using Matt's because he's, he's on as well for another bill in front of this committee later. Yes. Thank you, Justin, for picking up the pieces there. The Planning Commission, at its meeting, reviewed the zoning of the property as it was changed in 2017. It concluded that it was a mistake, that it should have been zoned I1. However, the bill erroneously ended up saying I2, and therefore, the Planning Commission believes that the bill should be a rezoning from C2 to I1. The specific findings the Planning Commission made were that, pardon my voice, the subject property, if rezoned to I1, would be encouraged to be reused in a way that's far more productive. It was made nonconforming by the zoning to C2 that happened in 2017. And one of the intents of the new zoning code was to minimize the creation of new nonconforming uses, not to increase the nonconforming uses. Secondly, this is a traditional light industrial area, as Mr. Williams has just pointed out, not just his property, but a number of others in the vicinity, all fit the general category of light industrial use, which is more appropriately covered by the I1 zoning district that was originally requested by the petitioner for this bill. The community has a preference for rezoning this property in order to reactivate it with a viable light industrial use, and the Commission took note of that fact. There has not been a significant change in population in this area since the current zoning map became effective, and there are none, no changes expected, expected from this 2020 census results. There are adequate public facilities in the vicinity, and there are no plans to change or reduce those facilities. Likewise, there are sufficient present and future transportation services available in the area. The uses that would be authorized by rezoning this property to I1 would be generally compatible with historic use of this property and with adjacent nonresidential uses. The Planning Commission therefore recommends approval of the bill, pardon me. Some of these findings, the Planning Commission further found that the majority of this area is light industrial in character. The property across Caton Avenue to its west is also zoned I1. And the east of this property, there is property zoned IMU, which is industrial mixed use. However, next to the railroad, it's more intense industrial use. This property is not well-suited for C2 uses, as evidenced by its continued disuse since departure of the lumber and contractor business following the '27 rezoning to C2. Because this property was made nonconforming by that rezoning, its reactivation in that way is no longer possible. Changing, changing the zoning to I1 would allow reuse of this property in a way consistent with its original uses. And therefore, the Planning Commission is recommending approval of this bill. There are any questions, I would be happy to try to answer them. And I pardon, I ask pardon for the problems we've had with the electronic connections.
Okay, thank, thank you, Martin. And I don't see any more hands raised or callers for this specific bill. So are there any questions at this point from...
Madam Chair, if I understand correctly, we have an amendment somewhere to amend the bill to be a I1 instead of an I2? Is that right? I don't see an amendment.
There is an amendment in the packet. Is there someone that's going to explain the amendment? Martin, do you have the amendment? Are you?
Madam Chair, the amendment would be to replace I2 wherever it appears in the bill with I1. It's that simple. It's just a change of the designation of the zoning.
Okay. Councilwoman Ramos, we're going to, Jennifer's going to try to pull it up on the screen.
I see it. I'm just trying to find the email. But I understand it. It's simple enough, so it's not...
But it is in the packet. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
No, it's not showing on the screen. Yeah. But that's, but that's okay. Any other committee members have any questions about the amendment or anything about this bill? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the findings?
So moved.
So moved by Councilwoman Ramos. Do I have a second? Hello?
Second.
Who made that second?
Bullock.
Thank you, Councilman Bullock. Taking a vote for the findings, Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes. And thank you. Yes, Councilman Dorsey has joined us a while ago. Councilman Conway has an excused absence. Councilwoman Glover? Is absent. Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes. And Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. Are there... Let's now vote on the amendment. Is there a motion to move the amendment?
So moved.
So moved by Councilwoman Ramos, second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Bullock. Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Conway, absent. Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes. Glover, absent. Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. And Stokes?
Yes.
Yes. Amendments approved. Is there a motion to move the bill favorable with amendments?
So moved, Councilman Stokes.
Oh, second.
By Stokes and second by Ramos. Chair Middleton, yes. Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Conway, absent. Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes. Glover, absent. Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. And Stokes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, this bill will move to the next council meeting. Okay. Okay. And your committee, you are going to, you should be getting in your mailbox at this point, all of the amendments. Okay. And while she's doing that, we're moving on to the next bill, Number 21-0056, which is the Urban Renewal Canton Industrial Area Amendment for the purpose of amending the urban renewal plan for the Canton industrial area, to revise the boundary of the plan to move a certain property, replacing certain exhibits to reflect the change, waiving certain content and procedural requirements, making the provisions of this ordinance severable, providing for application of this ordinance in conjunction with certain other ordinances, and providing for a special effective date. This bill was introduced on March 22, 2021. And the sponsor of this bill was Councilmember Cohen. And we'll take this time, Councilmember Cohen, would you like to comment?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. So again, 4900 Boston Street is a small property at the corner of Boston Street and Ponca, just south of the Greetown neighborhood. And this bill will remove 4900 Boston Street from the Canton Industrial Area Urban Renewal Plan. We introduced the bill in order to provide the opportunity for a Popeyes chicken to come through in the neighborhood. It's a mostly sort of less industrial and more commercial area currently. And we think that it is a good use. The bill has support from the Greetown Neighborhood Association and the two other neighborhood associations, Brewers Hill and Canton, have expressed no opposition. So again, we hope to support the applicant's desire to open a drive-through Popeyes in this area and appreciate the bill being heard.
Thank you, Councilmember Cohen. We'll now hear from representatives. And again, we'll start with the Planning Department. And I just want to mention that I understand that the Planning Department staff recommended disapproval of the bill, but the Planning Commission voted in favor of the bill. And I would like this to be explained during your testimony for the Planning Department. Who's...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Good afternoon. This is Matt DeSantis with Baltimore City Plan Department, Madam Chair, members of the committee. Yes, this bill was heard by the Planning Commission at their April 22, 2021 meeting. And while the, the Planning Department staff recommended against approval of the bill, the Planning Commission, upon hearing both the staff presentation and also receiving supplemental findings of fact provided by the applicant's attorney, the Planning Commission approved those, approved of those supplemental findings of fact and recommended approval of the bill. I can see that the, the applicant's attorney or attorneys are present. And I'm sure they would be able to, to provide in their testimony this afternoon what those findings of facts that they submitted are. But I'm happy to answer any other questions that I can.
Any questions from the committee before we move on to CHAPS, which is the Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation? Is there any one speaking on that? I know that they did defer to planning, but just checking in, I don't see anyone specifically from CHAPS, but they did defer to planning. The Department of Transportation, Liam Davis.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Liam Davis, Baltimore City Department of Transportation. We stand by our bill report, which is no objection, with the caveat that in the event that a drive-through restaurant were to be pursued here, DOT staff would evaluate plans during the project site plan review. So again, we stand by our bill report. Thank you.
Thank you. And the City's Solicitor's Office?
Hi, Madam Chair. This is Hillary Ruley on behalf of the Law Department. We have approved the bill for form and legal sufficiency.
Thank you. Housing and Community Development?
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the committee. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. We stand by our bill report in deference to the Law Department. Thank you.
Thank you. And the Baltimore Development Corporation, please explain your opposition.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Luis Cardona with the Baltimore Development Corporation. We stand by our report and opposition to this bill. Our position is based on considering this particular piece of legislation to be an erosion of very scarce and important industrial zoning at the confluence of two major truck routes, flooding the basic entrance to the port of Baltimore. So that is the, the short version of our opposition to this bill.
Thank you. Any questions to BDC? Department of Public Works? Marcia's not here, but they have no objection. Committee members, any questions at this time? To the sponsor or the agencies? Okay, do we have any raised hands? We'll take public testimony now. Any raised hands or any... Caroline Hacker? Would you like to speak on this bill?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Caroline Hacker, Rosenberg, Martin Greenberg, on behalf of the applicant. I just tried to turn my camera on it, but it doesn't look like it's actually showing it. Can you, you don't see me, do you?
No. A dark red, dark purple color.
Huh. All right. Well, clearly there's a problem with my camera that I'll have to sort out later. My apologies. This bill is the companion bill to City Council Bill 21-51, which was actually approved by the Council on Third Reader at last night's meeting, which is a rezoning bill that rezoned this property from the I2 zoning district to the IMU zoning district. And this, this bill goes with that bill in parallel to remove this property from the urban renewal plan. It is an industrial urban renewal plan, but as a practical matter, this property has not had an industrial use for over 50 years. It was originally, it had an industrial use until 1971, when the city acquired it. The city held it for many years, and it was vacant until, I think, about 2009, at which point the city sold it to another developer who operated a car rental establishment at this location, which is still there. Our client has recently purchased the property and intends to redevelop it with a Popeyes drive-through, as Councilmember Cohen mentioned. And that is consistent with the, the commercial use of this property historically for the last number of years and with the surrounding properties around it. So the purpose of this bill is just to remove this property from the industrial urban renewal plan because it has not, as a practical matter, had an industrial use for over 50 years.
Thank you, Caroline. Any questions? Okay, hearing none. We, there are...
Madam Chair, I just have one request. I don't see the, I don't, this isn't a zoning bill, so there's no plat accompanying it. But actually, never mind, I can find the property myself. I'd like to look, I like to look at the map, so I'll look at the code map, no problem. Sorry about that.
Right, so the technical amendment is to revise the date on the plats and number. This urban renewal amendment as number six are in, they are in your packets. But again, it's to revise, it's a technical amendment to revise the date on the plat and the number, so that's what we have to vote on. Do I have a motion to move that, those technical amendments just to change the date?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Dorsey and a second?
Second.
Second by Ramos. And now we have to vote on the amendment. Middleton, yes. I think I see two. I might have to come back to him.
Madam Chair? Not raise a point of order.
Yes, you may.
I'm just wondering, on amendments, in the past, we have often just done a voice vote on amendments and reserved a roll call vote for voting on actual bills. I wonder if we might just be able to take a voice vote on amendments?
We can, we can do that.
We did, we've done that also on findings of fact, made things go a little bit more expediently, just.
I'm in total agreement.
Thank you.
Sorry, Madam President, my vote was yes.
So we'll do a roll call. All those in favor of the motion to move the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, the amendments are approved. And just for the record, Conway, Conway and Glover are absent. Okay, but for the, as far as for the motion to move the bill, we have to go through the process. So motion to move the bill as amended?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Dorsey, second by Ramos. This bill favorable with amendments is a yes, yea for me. Conway is absent. Dorsey?
Yes.
Is a yes. Glover is absent. Ramos?
Yes.
Yes. Stokes?
Yes.
Yes. And back to John one more time. Hearing nothing, I'm gonna just kind of mark as an absence. Okay, this bill will be moved to second reader. Third bill, number 21 dash 0076, zoning conditional use conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 Zone District variance 1049 Bradley Avenue. For the purpose of permitting, subject to certain conditions, the conversion of a single-family dwelling unit to two dwelling units in the R8 Zone District on the property known as 1049 Bradley Avenue, block 0115, lot 069, as outlined in red on the accompanying plat, and granting a variance for certain bulk regulations, lot area size. This bill was introduced on May 3rd, 2021. The bill was sponsored by Councilmember Bullock. Councilmember Bullock, are you here for comments? Not answering, I see his name up, but there's no answer twice, so something must be going on. The committee will now hear agency reports, and the Planning Commission, again, please explain for the committee any differences in the planning staff recommendations and the Planning Commission's final action, and also explain any amendments or findings. And we'll now hear from Planning.
All right, we're going to try again, Madam Chair. Martin French for the Baltimore City Planning Department on behalf of the Planning Commission, using Matt DeSantis. I'm not sure mine is back online yet. The Planning Commission met at its regular meeting on June 24th this year, considered this bill, and it heard public testimony concerning the bill. The planning staff had recommended amendment of the bill to add a conversion standards variance and also to add a variance of off-street parking regulations. At the hearing, the owner of the property indicated that he was going to change the floor plan for the conversion so that there would no longer be a requirement to have a variance of the conversion standards. However, of course, because the lot size and the building location on the lot cannot be changed, it's still necessary to add a variance of off-street parking regulations of one space because the yard is not of sufficient size to allow one parking space to be created in the rear of the property. This is a primarily residential area. It's also part of the Harlem Park to urban renewal area, and the Planning Commission found that the proposed action was consistent with the urban renewal plan. The Planning Commission found that the size of the lot was appropriate for the proposed use, that there would be no change in traffic patterns if the use was authorized. The Commission further noted that the proposed multifamily use would not impair present or future development of that area. There was reasonable proximity for other dwellings, churches, and other places of worship, schools and public structures, and places of public gathering. There are adequate roads, utilities, drainage, and other necessary facilities. Proposed use of the structure would not affect preservation of cultural or historic landmarks or structures. Approval of the proposed use as a multifamily dwelling would not affect the existing character of the neighborhood. It would in fact be an improvement for the neighborhood because the property is currently vacant, and it would bring the property back to active use, and it would, in addition, provide an additional dwelling unit, which would help the need for housing resources in the city of Baltimore. The Planning Commission also found that the proposed use was consistent with the equity goals of Baltimore City. Now, that is a requirement for bills the City Council considers. There'd be a notation on appropriateness of the use in relation to the equity considerations that the city has established. Because the property is now vacant, the Planning Commission also felt that it was important that the owner be encouraged to complete this conversion as soon as possible, quite frankly. Property is in the National Register of Historic District, and the owner does have the option of exploring use of the historic property tax credit to facilitate conversion. With regard to the issue of the variance itself, Planning Commission noted that because the dimensions of the rear yard are approximately 15 by 15 feet, it is impossible for the yard to provide a parking space meeting zoning code standards of nine feet by 18 feet, therefore a variance of the off-street parking requirement would be appropriate to add as amendment to the bill. Planning Commission recommended approval of the bill with that amendment added to it. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anybody may have concerning this.
Thank you, Martin, and I'm gonna try to go back to John, Councilman Bullock again. I think we booted you back up. Did you, are you there, Councilman Bullock?
Yes, Madam Chair, I am here. I appreciate asking technical issues, but Martin French went through it very accurately. Again, this is a project that does have community support. We understand the issue as it relates to the variance for parking, and so I think we're all on the same page here, and I really appreciate your support.
Thank you, and sorry there, you missed the last vote on the last bill, and I understand with the technical difficulties. Okay, is there a motion to move the finding of the facts? I mean, oh, I'm sorry, I'm skipping over. Or the other agencies? Booting ahead here. Well, now move to the Board of Municipal Zoning Appeals. And no one's here, so we're, they deferred to planning. Transportation, Liam Davis?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. I just wanted to, first of all, apologize, this bill report was submitted with a package of bill reports yesterday evening, so it's not posted online. So I just wanted to clear up any confusion on that front for 21 dash 0076, we are no objection, so we are standing by that bill report today, and if you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification. City Solicitor's Office, can you please explain your report as well?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair. Lina DePietre for the City Law Department. The Law Department concurs with the Planning Commission and can approve the bill for formal sufficiency.
Thank you. Housing and Community Development?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Stephanie Murdock, Legislative Liaison for the Department of Housing and Community Development. As Mr. French mentioned, the property is currently vacant and was previously used for single-family residential use. Approval of the proposed use as a multifamily dwelling and the planned abatement of the vacant building notice will return the property back to productive reuse and may expand affordable housing choices for area residents. For that reason, we stand by our report, and we do not object to the passage of this bill.
Thank you. The Baltimore Development Corporation? BDC, are you a representative here for B? They did, they had no objection. I don't see a name right now of someone here, but there was no objection from BDC. Fire Department? They also had no objection. Is there someone from the Fire Department present? Oh, I do see Raven Thompson. Okay, they do stand by the report. Okay, moving on to the Parking Authority.
Madam Chair, Brett Thorne from the Parking Authority is on as a public participant and needs to be elevated as a panelist.
Okay, thank you. He's been elevated. Hello, Brett?
Hello, good afternoon, thanks Natasha. Good afternoon, Madam Chairwoman and committee members, this is Brett Thorne with the Parking Authority. We have reviewed the legislation, and the Parking Authority does not oppose passage of the bill.
Thank you. Any questions from the committee at this point before we take any public testimony? And do I see any other raised hands? Brett, don't forget to take your raised hand, sign down. Okay, okay. All right, moving on. Is there a motion to approve the findings?
Moved.
Who is that? Moved by?
Bullock.
Thank you.
Second by Dorsey.
Second by Dorsey. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Hearing none? The motion to, I mean, the finding of facts have been approved. Were there any amendments on this bill? Do I have a motion to move that, to move the amendment?
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay, moved by Bullock, second by Dorsey. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Motion carries, and the amendment has been approved. Is there a motion to move the bill favorable with amendments?
So moved.
By Bullock, second by Dorsey, and we have to do a roll call vote. Chair Middleton, yes. John? Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Conway is absent. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Glover is absent. Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Is a yes, and Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Is a yes. Okay, this bill as amended will be moved to second reader. And now we're on the final bill, number 21 dash 0097, which is the Work Session Voting Session for the Emergency Security Deposit Relief Act, and that was for the purpose of establishing the Emergent Security Deposit Program. The bill was introduced by me, the sponsor of the bill, on June 8th, 2021, and heard by this committee, Economic and Community Development, on June 29th, 2021. Again, I was the bill sponsor. Amendments were sent to the committee members on, twice, August 24th, and again on September There was, I guess I first just want to say that during that time between, I guess, June 29th and up really until today, there has been just really great collaboration between the mayor's administration and agencies. Lots of research, experience, again, and collaboration that just took place. I just feel really positive about the amendments, and I guess just a quick recap, when we had that hearing, you know, there were, you know, questions that came out that we basically, and it was a detailed two-hour or more, close to three-hour hearing, and it was a positive hearing, and the work session basically was created to go over the amendments and ideas that were presented at that hearing. And between June 29th up to today, those amendments were really amendments that was put together by the administration and by the people that are going to be presenting and work, doing the labor to give out and help this security deposit issue. And so I do want to just give a quick shout out to the Office of Family and Children's Success, the leader of that office, Tisha Edwards, and her experience, and she has, you know, worked very hard on just a number of things in, of way, things and ways of helping our renters in need, and I just really want to give a shout out to her and her office. Also, the Department of Housing and Community Development, you also are the ones that work hard to help our renters and give relief in many ways, and of course, and a shout out to the Law Department that, you know, you were a part of making sure that the processes and everything was done sufficiently, and of course, Nikki Thompson and Lucy Font of the Office of the President, so I'm sure there were probably other people involved, but the goal is to help these individuals in our city that need help immediately, and we know that security deposits are a big issue for a number of people that's trying to work and help and not be evicted and just have some decent housing so they can focus on their children, and we have a large percentage of single And we have a large percentage of single-family mothers that are raising children that are renters, and security deposit relief is just one way to make that happen. These issues have been going on long before this pandemic has started. And I'm just, you know, thankful for the council for also being very supportive of this issue as well, because at the end of the day, it's not about any of us, it's about giving some good, decent services to help people in housing needs, particularly, again, this bill is just focused on security deposit relief. And so now I'm going to stop there, and I think we're going to, I think it's important that we start with the mayor's offices that helped to create these amendments and helped to put them together. And the Office of the President and myself, we worked to, worked with them, because, again, all of us, at the end of the day, want this thing to pass and be and get out there as soon as possible. So on that note, I would like to turn it over to the, I guess, the Office of Family and Children's Success and HCD. And then, you know, Nikki Thompson can also be a part with Lucy in really explaining the amendments. So, Tisha, did you want to start your office, or how did you, how did you want to do this? So it can move through correctly and we can just go ahead and?
I will defer to the Legislative Services Team, the team that really, I see, I see Councilman Dorsey has his hand up, but I would refer to the legislative team that took the lead on the actual amendments, and I can weigh in if the council has questions about the substance or context of those amendments, if that's okay with you, Chair.
So, and I do want to give a shout out for Natasha Mihou and that legislative side as well. And Natasha, did you want to make a comment? I know Councilman Dorsey, you had your hand raised. Yes?
Madam Chair, am I crazy? Is this not the first hearing we've had on this bill?
I don't want to say that you're crazy, but no, we had a hearing, a long, three-hour hearing, three-hour hearing. This is just the work session that came about when?
Oh, when did we have that hearing?
The hearing, the bill was introduced on June 8, and the hearing was on June 29. Three hours ago.
That's reflected in Legistar as having ever been, as having ever occurred. And I don't recall that hearing, but, you know, my memory is imperfect. But that hearing is not reflected, reflected in Legistar as having occurred.
I chaired the hearing, and it was a hearing.
Okay. I believe you. I believe you.
As Legistar, that's something that's?
There are notes, there is a PDF file showing notes from the hearing, but?
So it sounds like there was some issue with Legistar. I don't know if, Matt, did you want to, do you have an answer to that?
It's okay, Madam Chair, I just didn't?
I'll get Jennifer to kind of look at Legistar.
Thank you.
Okay. So moving on, and Natasha, did you have something that you wanted to say?
Yes, thank you, Madam.
And again, I also want to thank your office as well. You def, your office definitely took the lead in working with these amendments.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to briefly say that it has been really great working with you, the Council President's Office, the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, and Housing and Community Development to further refine this bill and to bring together all these amendments and ensuring that we could develop a program that would work well for all of the city residents. Thank you.
Okay. So, okay, thank you, Natasha. And Councilman Dorsey, Jennifer's going to send you, I guess, a link, because she says she sees it, or she says it is.
There are notes, there is a PDF linked on Legistar that show notes from the hearing. So my concern is, look, it's just been so long since the hearing that I just don't recall it taking place. A lot has happened in my life since then. In any case, it does say that the hearing started at 2:00 and ended at 2:30. I imagine that that's a technicality. We probably had something else scheduled to start at 2:30 that, I don't know. The notes are confusing in that way.
Yeah. There was other bills as well, I think, before that, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct. Thank you.
But anyway, it was sent, it was sent to you, again, since you brought that up.
Thank you.
So moving on, so, did I hear someone else that had a hand raised?
Yeah, sorry, Madam Chair, this is Matt Stegman from the Council President's Office. Just wanted to, I guess, for final clarification, you can see it on the calendar of committee events, and for some reason, that was not carried over to the actual Legistar file for the individual bill. So the hearing did take place, it is on the calendar, but is, for whatever reason, not reflected in the file for this bill, and we'll get that ready. So, thank you, Councilman Dorsey.
Okay, so it just sounds like some technical transfer overs or something that's going on, but I appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Nikki Thompson from the Office of the Mayor. Did you want to say anything? Did you want to start and go over some of these amendments?
Madam Chair, you said Nikki Thompson from the Office of the Mayor, the President.
I'm sorry. Office of the President.
You muted, Nikki.
Nikki, are you there? Hello?
She's there, we just can't hear her.
Oh, Nikki, it sounds like your sound is not on. We can't hear you. So it looks like she's going to log out and log back in, and Lucy, she wants you to kind of begin. So there, there were amendments to this, exactly, I think there's exactly 12 amendments. Did you want to start by going over, or you want to wait? Or did we, did you? I'm sorry.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Yeah, absolutely. Hi, everyone. Yeah, we're very excited to finally be going over these amendments with the rest of the council members. I'll give Director Thompson just a few more minutes to get back on, but in the meantime, if anybody has, well, let's just wait for Director Thompson, and then, if not, I'm happy to walk us through the amendments.
So, committee, as I stated, while we're waiting, the amendments were given twice. There's 12 amendments. While we're waiting, was there any specific amendment that stood out that you wanted to discuss?
I just wanted to say, this is so much better with an interlineated copy, so I really do appreciate that the Council President's Office got it interlineated. It's a lot easier, so thank you for that.
Vice President Middleton, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, wonderful, wonderful. Thank you all, sorry for the technical difficulty. So to restart, there are 12 amendments in total, but the majority of them are mostly technical, swapping out the original agency with Director Edwards' agency, the Mayor's Office of Children and Families, who so graciously worked with us. Thank you again, Director Edwards, for all of your expertise in pulling this program together to actually make it something that we can implement for folks quickly, without delay, so thank you for that. So it looks like it's a lot of amendments, but a majority of them are technical. And the ones that I'm going to highlight specifically really address some of the issues that were raised in the prior hearing. So first, I want to point out that we've changed all of the instances of voucher in the legislation to grant. It was raised in the last hearing that the term voucher is often stigmatized, and this is intended to work as a grant anyways. So we've changed all the instances of voucher to grant again, which is why you see so many amendment changes. We also have the grant being provided to the housing provider on behalf of the family, because that's necessary for the two-step verification process that the agencies must use in order to be able to disburse funds. So if we want to make sure that this is even implementable at all, we have to do it this way. I know that there were some council members who really wanted to try to do direct assistance to the resident, but if we want to actually have a program that can be implemented, right now, the funding mechanisms that we have require the two-step verification, and so we have to provide the grant on behalf of the family to the housing provider. So that's a second large amendment. The third is that we have stipulated that this assistance should not be counted as income. It was prior, raised in the prior hearing, that this type of influx of assistance could be used to kind of put people over that benefits cliff and maybe knock them out of some other categories of assistance. And so we've added the amendment to stipulate that this should not be counted as income to avoid that specific instance and concern. And then finally, most notably, we removed some of the specific applicant requirements that we previously had, like the 60 AMI, 60% AMI, et cetera, et cetera, because those were requirements that were basically put on us due to the restrictions of the funding that we were using. So we had to have those requirements. So instead, to allow for flexibility of funding, since there are so many different new funding sources that are coming into the city, we removed that portion and then replaced it with a prioritization for that particular low-income 60% AMI to ensure that they get first bites at the apple of this assistance without also, while still giving us the flexibility and the freedom to use whichever type of funding that becomes available. So if we have, you know, just an example, ARP funding is very flexible, it can meet a lot of different needs. There are a lot of different folks who may not necessarily fall within some of the very low-income requirements of some of the other types of funding. So it was really important, after our discussions, that we allow for that flexibility, but still have that key prioritization for the folks that we know we want to get first dibs on this type of assistance. Those are the main amendments. The rest are really technical, just switching out, you know, agencies, et cetera, et cetera. I also know that there were a couple of questions that you had, Councilmember Ramos, about some of the language that we use. I will open it up to Director Edwards or Stephanie from DHCD, if they want to talk a little bit more about the notice of intent to lease. That was a question that, I think that answers, Councilmember, if we go in that direction, I think it would answer Councilmember Ramos's question, but I'll let her pose her question and then answer as we see fit. Any questions also about the amendments that I've already gone over?
Thank, thank you, Nikki. Tisha, is there anything you want to add, you or Stephanie, from housing?
Hi, Madam Chair. Good afternoon again. Stephanie Murdoch, Legislative Liaison with the HCD. I just wanted to reiterate the points of many of our other speakers this afternoon, that we did work closely with yourself, the Council President's Office, MoGR, MOCFS, and the Law Department to develop these amendments that were just discussed. And we do believe that these amendments address our previously noted concerns, so we recommend amendment of this bill and approval.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Tisha Edwards?
Agree wholeheartedly with my colleague at DHCD. Again, this has been a very collaborative process, a very detailed process. I think we all rolled up our sleeves to make sure that we had a legislation that we could implement day one, and that would meet the growing needs of our community, especially during this really challenging time. And so MOCFS does completely support the bill as presented today with the amendments.
Okay. Committee members, are there any questions to any agencies? Okay, at this time, is there a motion to approve? Oh, I'm, Councilwoman Ramos?
Yeah, I have some questions, if you don't mind. Madam Chair, I really appreciate that the time that everybody has taken on this bill. I think it's, it's going to be a really great program. So I really appreciate all the time that everybody has spent, and I want to thank Madam Chair and Director Thompson for all the work, the time that you've taken in answering my emails. I do appreciate that as well. A couple of things that I had noticed that I just was curious about, and I guess I'll just go in order. One is, I'm looking at the interlineated copy when I'm talking about page numbers, if that's all right, and page four under B, "Collaboration," that the Mayor's Office shall collaborate with the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Commission. Shouldn't that be DHCD, since DHCD open, is, oversees the commission and would probably be an agency that you would collaborate with?
Could you reference that point, where it's located again?
Sure thing. I'm in the interlineated copy, number four, the reprint, or, yeah, it's number four, and I'm on page four, under B, "Collaboration."
Okay.
So actually, to your point, I'll let, I'll let Stephanie.
No, no, I think we are in version six, not version four.
Yes, I was, I was going to say, we're in version six, and actually, Stephanie brought up that same point during our conversations and offered an additional amendment to address that, so I will, I will let her share.
Okay, the version that was just emailed to us was number four.
Hold on one second, please.
I'm looking at the copy, this is unofficial reprint, September 8, 2021. Is that the date we're all looking at?
No. I have reprint, August 16.
And that's the one I'm looking at.
Yeah, it should be reprint, September 8, 2021.
Could you, with that, August?
I've just sent the reprint to Jennifer and also to you, Chair Middleton, to send around to the rest of the committee members. As Vice President Middleton mentioned earlier, we've met a couple times, so our amendments have changed a couple times.
Can that be sent to all the committee members?
Yes, yes, I'll send it to the entire committee right now.
And we'll hold while that September version is sent to all committee members.
Okay, thank you.
So Councilmember Ramos, you, do you have the September copy? Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Now, the version that Jennifer sent us earlier today was the August one. That's what I've been working from. So, yeah, and that's okay. There's just tons of them flying around. So I just want to make sure we're working from the same one.
Okay, let's, we'll hold on for a minute and wait for that because it was never sent to Jennifer.
Should be sent to everyone now. And the major changes are, and Stephanie wants to speak about that particular part, that is the major change. So thank you for bringing it up, Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you. Yes, I'd be happy to speak to that part of the legislation. As you'll see, from the sixth version of the interlineated bill, that collaboration section has been removed. And that was done because the funding from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund as a source was removed from the bill as well. So there's no need for the commission itself to be involved in the development of these rules and regulations.
Okay.
Okay, that's great. When great minds think alike. Excellent. Okay. Let me just make sure, if you don't mind, I gotta look at this real quick to see. On page, page five of the September 8 version under audits. I just have a quick question about what that, what the audits look like. So those are the regular audits that are done usually by M O C F S for program eligibility anyway?
Correct. So the commitment here is that this is a program that ends on September 30, 2022. And we were committed to coming back to the council and just preparing, we do audits normally, but this would be kind of a report out to the council on who we served, confirming that we met those priority, equity priorities that are in the bill, other information, so that there's just a level of reporting back out to the council. I don't know if the word is audit. I wouldn't think of the audit like a.
I'm sorry, Director, this is related to a family's eligibility.
What page are you on? I'm sorry.
Sure thing. I am on page five of the September version at the top, under B, audits.
Yeah, that is not auditing the families. It is auditing our records that the people who received the fund, who received the grant are the folks who are eligible. So it is not auditing the families. We are not auditing families. We're auditing the program, I should say.
Yeah, but that's the general way that you normally do it for eligibility anyway, right? We're not doing anything different.
No, no. And it's a commitment to come back and share that information with the council.
Got it. Okay, we'll get to that in just a second. But thank you very much.
And I just want, I just want to say too, that I think we all kept, tried to keep in our minds that this was something that we wanted to also be just overall a continued process, even when, you know, the relief money runs out. We wanted to have a sure program that is workable and continue to help people with security deposits. Go ahead, Councilman.
I think that's a, that's a great idea. Under grant payment, I don't know if this would go there, but I, I don't really see anywhere in the bill about what happens to the grant after the tenancy.
So this is addressed in the definitions on page two about what is a security deposit. So page two F, it talks about in the definition what this is, and it talks about that the end of the lease, the amount goes back to the tenant, minus non-payment of rent, breach of lease, those kinds of things. And we were using the language and definite, same definition and language from state law on this.
Very good. That's at the bottom of page two.
Yeah, I see that. I was curious about, so in a scenario where, because right now it looks like the program is that the grant actually goes to the landlord on behalf of the tenant.
Correct.
Right? So that what we're really, what we're saying then is that after the tenancy, minus, you know, damages and lack of rent or whatever, then the landlord gives it back to the tenant, not to the city.
That is correct.
Okay. And is there a, I guess, I guess the tenant would use the same, the same matter of getting that back that you would in a normal tenancy?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, I just didn't know whether we needed to clarify that or not, but it sounds like that that makes sense. The other question I had related to the landlords was if, can you walk us through how this, is there a, I am concerned, although I know that M O C F S has actually, you know, been lightning speed compared to many other places, that if there is a delay in payment, what happens to the tenant if they are not able to get the security deposit in time to be able to occupy the tenancy?
So I am not concerned about the delay because, number one, the information, different from back rent, where you have to get information from two parties, and one of the challenges with back rent, if you're using that as a comparison, one of the big barriers on moving documentation forward is rent ledgers, which are very difficult to decipher. We don't have rent ledgers in this scenario. And the other challenge is that there is a very substantive grant agreement that landlords have to sign. That is also a challenge in the back rent. The, the information needed from the tenant is very streamlined and it comes, this is a one-way process, not a two-way process. So the tenant applies for the back rent, I mean, excuse me, for the security deposit, provides us a letter of intent to lease, provides verification of income, and all that the landlord has to do is provide payment information, and then we're able to streamline. And we have a team dedicated just for the security deposit. So it will not get integrated into the back rent workflow. And so because we have this very streamlined process with very minimal documentation, we think that we're going to be able to process payments within three to five business days, as long as we have all of the information. So we're not overly concerned about there being large lag times. Now, I say that in public with a caveat, depending on how many applications we receive, right?
Sure.
We, I can't anticipate what day one is going to look like, and that could change the situation. But what I will say, Councilwoman Ramos, is we understand in this particular situation, time is of the essence, that it's very difficult to get housing, affordable housing for this target group. And we want landlords to be willing participants in this process, and the burden is on us to provide payment in a very timely way. And because of the way we have the workflow set up in the agency, I'm relatively confident with that caveat about demand, but I'm relatively confident. And we do have some contingencies available to make sure that we can honor that commitment. But we are aware of the time sensitivity of this particular initiative.
And I appreciate that. And I, and I figured you'd already started building the, the infrastructure. I was going to suggest that, and I'm not sure that state law would allow me to, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that with that caveat, is that, you know, would we have to, if the, if the landlord knew that they were going to get payment, allow for the tenant to go ahead and occupy the space so that, you know, the tenant's not, you know, but, you know, not in a bad place for a few days? So, you know, I, I just, and I, I'm not sure that state law will allow us because you can't do that with a security deposit regularly. So, but my thought was, is there, is there a way that we, or should we add some caveat that says, you know, if you're guaranteed the payment, that the tenant would be allowed in?
I do want to raise a point that it might be helpful to kind of walk through. It was helpful for me when I had the same concern about timing, Councilmember Ramos. If Director Edwards, you'd walk us through the letter of intent to lease process and how that works on the front end, because that is also a pretty streamlined process that really makes the possibility of having a gap time in between when you receive the assistance and when you can move in, nil to none. And, but walking through that process of when they get that, of how you can get that form and how that form is done was helpful for me. So I don't know, Director Edwards, if you don't mind, walking through that.
And Stephanie, you should also weigh in.
Yes, yes.
So the first thing.
Let me just say that I have every confidence that this is going to be a smooth process. I just wanted to have some security measures for the tenant if, if there was a delay, that's all.
No, it's a great question, and it came up.
And I just want to add that this just shows, this is just, this just shows how collaborate, the collaboration was just so, so wonderful. Because all these questions that you're asking, you know, they were raised as the bill was being discussed. And because of the experience that was already there with forms that are already in, things that are already in place, and kind of not, at this moment, staying strictly on the security deposit issue, really helped to move those things swiftly. And, you know, having the Law Department there just kind of verifying, most of the things were already in place. So I just wanted to, I can't say that enough of how that collaboration played a big role in not adding new things to get to, we really wanted to work on that need as quickly as possible.
Right.
By use what we already have in place.
So what I would just say, and I appreciate that, the concern, Councilwoman Ramos, the first thing I would say is that the, the program guidelines we are creating, we are really leaning on DHCD, who already has had some experience, particularly in disaster situations, where people have had to move very quickly and had very limited resources. And so we conferred with DHCD about what does that look like? Because those are emergency situations. Those are families who are, who are abruptly displaced and who need to be moved. And it is customary that landlords can provide a one pager. This is not a lease. They do not, because a lot of times the landlord will not lease until they have the check, right? And we don't want people getting in properties and there being some other outline, outstanding issue, and now there has to be an eviction, right? Or whatever the case may be, because we just jumped a little prematurely. So these letters of intent to lease literally is just a three-sentence, four-sentence statement from the landlord confirming the terms of the lease, that the person has been approved by, for the lease pending receipt of the security deposit. And so that is all we need. And, you know, we need to verify income because of the grant, but we need to verify income. We need that letter of intent. And then all we need is a checking account number and a W nine from the landlord. And it's really that simple. And so because this is an existing practice in the landlord-tenant community, particularly in this demographic, and it's a practice that DHCD has used without fail and, and has not had unintended disputes come out of it, we feel very strongly that we can rely on that process and that it does get to your concern, which is we want people housed as quickly as possible, and we do not want any bureaucratic delays. And so, again, understanding that the intent of your recommendation, I think that there's a best practice that we would like to rely on so that we don't have any unintended consequences. Because part of the efficiency of this program is writing the check and getting out the way. And anytime we have to come back to these relationships and say, you know, you're there, something else has come up between the landlord and tenant, and they only had 90% agreement on something, or whatever the case may be, it really takes resources from the efficiency and effectiveness that you're looking at. So we would just, because it is a pilot, we really like to rely on practices that we're all familiar with and that we can move forward really quickly so that we don't have to have this kind of a protection because it's not been in place before and it's worked. So that's my feedback on that issue.
Thank you. Tisha, you explained that very well. Appreciate that. And I was just sitting here, and I also just want to mention, you know, and, and what I'm about to say is just, this is, this bill is just kind of an example that can help with that. I know yesterday at our council meeting, you know, we had an ordinance and resolution put in about the quarterly meetings and updates on ARP money and just, you know, all things, those, these things kind of work hand in hand with what was introduced yesterday as well by the president's office. So I think that, again, that this Relief Act bill is a good example of some of the reasons why we as a council need those quarterly update meetings. Did you have any more questions, Councilwoman?
I had two more. I had two more, if you don't mind.
Sure.
One is, I'm, I'm very happy to see, and I, of course, knew it would happen because of all of the work that this committee and, of course, the Mayor's Office has been doing on equity. So I'm glad to see that there's a whole section on equity, which is wonderful. I had a question about, about how you see this playing out, and specifically around the word, the median household income in the vicinity of a family's desired permanent housing with areas in the low to median income receiving highest priority. I'm imagining that the way that this seems to be playing out is that those in most need would be prioritized. And so my only question about the word permanent is, they may not permanently want to live there. They may want to permanently live somewhere else, but where they are living now, or they're going to be living with this new apartment, is in the low-income areas.
That's how we are reading it. So permanently, not meaning that permanent forever, or, but it is, the place that they are moving to is a community of priority based on these criteria. And their permanent is the term of the lease, right? That's their permanent place as long as they have a lease there. So I don't know how to make that more clear, or you can provide suggestions how to make that clear, but the, the permanent location is driven by where is the applicant saying that they're going to live? And then we juxtapose that towards data around census tracts and communities that have this high need priority areas. And if you are a client, if you are a person in Baltimore who's going to a place who, who's, who's, whose tenancy is going to be not in a priority area versus whose tenancy is going to be in a priority area, we choose the person with the priority area tenancy first in this list of priorities as we spin down the resources.
I guess my question about that is, what if a family wants to go to, wants their child to go to a school that's outside of that area and wants to move there, which is their right to do with, you know, whatever income they have and whatever voucher they have? How does that, how does that play out?
So you can go to school anywhere you want to in the city. So that's, I mean, we have citywide choice. So I don't, I understand, I think.
Well, but a lot of parents like to live close to the school so that they can walk to the school, because they may not be able to take their kid to the, to the bus stop or to the, to the.
So I'd just like to add, this bill is not going to address every issue that deals with homelessness. It's strictly dealing with one subject, and we, and it's not being, there's a whole lot of issues dealing with housing. And we can't answer every, you can't, we can't, it's not cure-all with everything. There's pieces. And security, this Security Deposit Relief Act is just one piece. So I, I'm just trying to understand why it seems to me like you're putting in so many other issues that can't be, can't be answered and resolved by this one act.
I think this is the only one where I have a question about the, the language and the concept. The rest of them were clarifying questions and I think everybody did a wonderful job in clarifying and I really appreciated that.
So, Chair, if I may, if I may, Madam Chair, answer Councilwoman Ramos's question. So to this section, thank you for your question. To be quite frank, it's intended to ensure that those who are of the lowest income have the ability to choose where they want to live. With some of the previous language that we had prior to during our discussions, there wasn't enough flexibility to allow for those who were of the lowest income to also have the ability to choose a, a place that was, I'm not going to, that, that was going to also put them like in the same line of choosing as those who, you know, might have more money to be able to just live there, you know, on their own. So the issue that we were trying to address specifically with this is if you have a low-income renter who, as we know, you have to make a certain amount of money to even be able to apply for certain types of housing. And then the security deposit at most is allowed to be up to three times, you know, that amount monthly. So what we wanted to do was to ensure that folks who may not necessarily meet that criteria, but they want to live in a nice place and they deserve to live in a nice place because that's what our whole purpose is here, that they weren't edged out by somebody who just, you know, may, they may be 80% AMI, they may be able to, and that better fits in with whatever the apartment requirements are. But we are intentionally trying to make sure that those who have least access to resources are able to choose those specific places first and have priority there. So I appreciate your scenario and I just wanted to kind of provide the scenario that we were specifically trying to, to address with this language, which was an issue that we saw quite consistently where there are people who are just right there on the edge versus maybe a more, I don't like to use the word attractive, but maybe by more, you know, societal, industry, market standards are more attractive for that particular leasing or housing provider to give, you know, folks who are lower income kind of that same equitable opportunity to have a shot at securing the housing through this assistance with the security deposit.
Yeah, and I, I definitely-
I can't say enough that there's got to be a start with breaking barriers somewhere. And I see this security deposit way as one of those barrier-breaking ways.
No, I agree. And I think one of the things that we're, we do see is that often there may, there are families that, that may choose a lower rent because they can, they are able to afford, because then they can actually afford the security deposit. Whereas in this case, they may be able to afford a little bit more rent because they're getting help with the security deposit, which I think is a good thing. Because we do know that we don't, there are some, there are people living in substandard conditions in a lot of our, in our rental properties. And I, what, what I guess I'm just trying to make sure, it's, I'm very torn about this, okay? As you can tell, because we obviously want to put more investments in our areas that need investment most and that's in our low-income areas. We also want to, it sounds like the Director, Nikki, you're saying the same thing I am, where we want also allowed to have choice. And so that, that, that statement as it's written doesn't, it says that low-income areas would be given priority. And then it first it says that there's the desire.
It says that medium house, it says that the priority will be given to grant recipients based on median household income in the vicinity of a family's desired permanent housing with areas with the lowest, medium income receiving highest priority. So it is specifically about the recipient and the basis being on their median income of where they desire to, to live. But I also will pose to the Law Department, if, if there's anything that you think we can maybe offer that could be clarifying to, to Councilmember Ramos's point, because I don't think that we disagree. I think it just, we feel like the language suffices and, and, you know, she does not. And that's totally fine if we can find something that can be further clarifying, if possible.
Elena, do you, could you answer that? Is, is what's written, that was approved, correct? I, I, you're on mute.
Okay, now I'm good. Are you talking about the same language, about the equity language or?
Yes.
Has it been approved, did you say, Council?
That was, yeah, my first question is what was, is already written? Has that been already approved?
I don't know. Have, have the, I'm not sure. I don't think they, I think that's, we're still speak, talking about them, Presidents and Members.
I think that was in the original bill. It doesn't look, it look like it's amended.
Oh, that part of it? Okay, you're right. Just the grants part, you're right. I mean, the, the only problem that I could potentially see with it is, is it, is it void for, I don't think pervagness. I mean, I, I, otherwise there's really, there's no legal issues with this particular language. I don't think it's vague. I think it's pretty clear about what you're saying. So I don't think there's a legal issue here. It's more of a policy to your administrative matter, I think.
Yeah, and I, I just, I unfortunately don't have a suggestion. I, I need to chew on it a little bit more. And maybe, I, I also don't want to hold this up because I think that you all have worked very hard on it. I wonder if we can work on clarifying this, if we pass this out today for a floor amendment? Because I think we're trying to get to the same thing. I think we just want to clarify the, the language.
That can be discussed, you know, I'd like to move everything forward, but-
That's what I mean. I know you don't want to hold it up and I don't want to hold it up. I did, I just want to be clear on that language and I'm, I'm happy-
Before, you know, second reader. But yeah, you check with the law, work with the Law Department and see what you want to come up with. And if they approve it, we can, it can be discussed.
Yeah, Director Thompson too, because she's been working on this as well. And again, I think we agree. I just am wanting to make sure that we've got the right language. So I do appreciate your indulging me on that. And then the only last point I had, and I, I, I don't think that this is going to hold anything up, but I just wanted to, I have another bill that asked for the MOCFS to do something and was told by the Law Department that we can't do that. I guess because the MOCFS, MOCF-
That should not be discussed at this particular bill hearing. That's something that you have to, this is a completely different subject. So you shouldn't bring that up. We're, that's, you're going to be confusing. This is just one bill that we're trying to get moving to help our people with.
Oh, no, I'm not trying to stall it. I just have this question about the idea of, we can't legislate what the mayor's office can do. And so I guess because the mayor's office is hand in hand on this, that, you know, the Law Department is comfortable with us passing this?
You, Councilwoman Ramos, you have to talk to the Law Department on that. You have, you can sit down and meet and talk with the Law Department. That's what-
Yeah, I have on, on my, yeah, I have on my other bill, but this is just a question for this one.
Are you, who are you asking?
Eli, Mr. Petro.
Okay.
I have not reviewed this bill for that purpose. I think it's, you know, largely, it's not really regulating the, the mayor's office. It's, it's providing for a program. You're, you're not telling the mayor's office its mission here. You're just saying, well, we're making this program and the mayor's office is, is involved in it. But I don't think you're, by this, in this legislation, you're ordering the mayor's office to do anything in particular.
Do you have any more questions, Councilwoman Ramos?
No, I'll-
Is there any more questions from the committee? At this point, is there a motion to move the package of amendments?
So moved.
So moved by Councilman Stokes, who I have a second.
Second, Bullock.
Second, Councilman Bullock. All in, all in favor? Say yea.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, the amendments have been approved. Is there a motion to move the bill favorable with amendment?
So moved.
Second.
So moved by Stokes, second by Bullock, Chair Middleton, yes. Councilman Bullock?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Conway is absent. Councilman Dorsey?
Yes.
Yes. Councilman Glover?
Yes.
And Councilman Glover, thank you for joining us. He had some technical difficulties ear, earlier, so he's been on for this bill. Councilwoman-
Thank you, Madam President.
You're welcome. Councilwoman Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Stokes?
Yes.
Yes, and this will, bill will be moved to second reader. And Councilmember Ramos, anything you want to talk about in between with the agencies? Please let us know before it, it comes to the meeting.
Oh, yeah. It's just the one last, that, that one particular point that I think will work out. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, I'd like to thank everyone today for attending and being patient with all of the bills. And thank you again for this last bill. It's another step again in working to help the constituents in our city. You all have a great day.
Take care.
Bye-bye.